Good evening, everybody. And I am deeply apologetic for the late start. We have been in a very, very meaty closed session. In fact, we are going to recess our Board of Education closed session, and we'll take it back up after the regular meeting is over. We will now reconvene the regular Board of Education open session at 7:19. Mr. Wong, will you give us the pledge?
If you can please stand. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The roll call is everybody is here in their places. Reporting out a closed session, in closed session, the board took action to terminate the employment of permanent classified employee KV2035704, effective September the 10th, and the vote was unanimous. There was, and there was an item that came to attention to the board today at about 11 o'clock this morning from parent that one of our Zoom classrooms had been hacked. And in the hacking of that, there was chat that went into it that used racial and derogatory terms. That happened at about 11 o'clock this morning. Two months ago, the board took up an action on a resolution that we did not and would not support anything that was racist of any nature. In essence, a zero tolerance to anything that was racist in our school district. The chat that was written was purely, surely racist, and we condemn it to its fullest. I don't even have the necessary language to condemn it as far as it needs to be done. Just it has no place in a classroom in our school district or anywhere else for that matter. The board has asked our superintendent for a full investigation on how the breach occurred and to report back to the board with all of the findings at the shortest amount of time possible. Our commitment to the community is that we will never tolerate a racist or an unfair or anything that is towards hatred in our school district. And you have the commitment and the word of the entire board. The policy that we adopted two months ago is a very living document to us, and we stand behind that document. Dr. Terosian, do we have any change in the order of our business?
We do not, President Hammond.
Thank you. Up matter first is the approval of the minutes. I'd like to take this as one vote for both of minutes, please. Entertainer motion?
I move to with the inclusion of both minutes for both meetings.
I'll second that. You have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Ms. Huff, may we have a vote, please?
For Member Gillam?
Yes.
For Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
For Member Travanti?
Yes.
For Member Wong?
Yes.
For President Hammond?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Up next is the report from the superintendent.
Thank you, President Hammond, members of the board. I am excited to discuss and talk a little more about Danny Ray, Monrovia Unified School District's Teacher of the Year. We will do so in our next board meeting and invite Danny and his family so that we can properly celebrate him and all that he has done for our school district and for our students over the years. But I did want everybody to hear that he was our selection. And yesterday, we had the opportunity to go to his home, remain socially distant, wearing masks, but with his family around him, be able to communicate with him that he was our selection for the Monrovia Unified School District Teacher of the Year. He represents so many of the qualities that are really indicative of so many of our people. And he just, through his commitment, through what he does, day in and day out for students, really became such, his nomination was selected. More to come with Danny Ray in a couple of weeks.
Cool.
Great.
Anything else?
That concludes my report.
Congratulations, Mr. Ray. Up next, we have public comments. The board encourages the public to make comments. Simply send your comments in, and they shall be read. Ms. Huff, do we have any public comments this evening?
Yes, for President Hammond, we have one public comment tonight. This comment comes from Chris Blanton. Mr. Blanton writes, "I'm requesting that this statement be read in its entirety and not censored in any way, shape, or form because of what I'm about to say. Last year, at the end of the year, Aries was not updated for the last two weeks of school. I sent an email to Mr. McGinnis asking why that was. So as my student was attempting to bring his grades up, I never heard back from Mr. McGinnis, and school ended earlier this year." I'm sorry, "and school ended." "Earlier this year, a survey was sent out. Surprisingly, me being very critical of the school district and the schools, I did not receive a survey despite having an active Aries account, nor did my wife, who also has an active Aries account for the same student. On September 2nd, the high school had an open house and supposedly a question and answer period at 6:13 PM. I had Anthony ask a question, 'When are you going to hire a top-flight IT person due to his great education hire?' I'm sorry, 'due to his great education.' 'Hire' was spelled H-I-E-R, and 'top-flight' was F-L-I-T-E. I was unaware of his spelling, as to me, someone in the 10th grade should be able to spell 'hire' and 'flight.' I did not see until afterwards that it was not done correctly. The issue I have is according to the email that my question was dismissed. So at 6:16, I emailed back, 'Why are you dismissing questions critical of the education being provided?' Also dismissed. And at 6:22, identified myself and asked, 'Why do you keep dismissing my questions?' You know, an email is a permanent record. It's not just like talking on the phone that this person who kept dismissing the questions felt no issue with totally ignoring a parent's questions and concerns after the question and answer. I'm sorry, after the question and answer was ended, I sent Mr. McGinnis an email asking him why my questions had been dismissed. Sorry, that's a lot of run-on sentences. "I sent Mr. McGinnis an email asking him why my questions had been dismissed. Today is September 9th, and I have not received an answer. I do not understand running a school district and not having a school principal answering a parent's questions. I try to be respectful, and for some reason, me being so critical, with good reason, I'm ignored. I look forward to the day that I will be able to present my issues in person instead of an email, as I've done in the past. There is a great deal of room for improvement from the school district and the school district as a whole. I'd also like to compliment you on your robust financial acumen that you use to sign a contract that costs more than you bring in. Well done. Thank you very much."
Thank you, Mr. Blanton.
That is all the comments.
Thank you very much.
I have a question, Board President Hammond, if I may ask.
Sure.
We have heard before from Mr. Blanton, and because of where his comments are, we can't have a dialogue, a back-and-forth, bidirectional conversation. Is there a place that he can put comments to allow me to ask him some questions?
There is nothing that would prohibit you from having a conversation. There would not be a place at a board meeting unless the item were something that were agendized that we would be taking possible action on.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Up next, we have informational reports, starting with Dr. Terosian on distant learning.
Thank you, President Hammond, members of the board. Today again, we begin with our guiding principles of how we have prioritized and focused on our work with distance learning. Next slide, please, Ms. Huff. Our enrollment, we are 83 below projection, which is a little better than last week. And we hope that those numbers continue to rise. Next slide, please, Ms. Huff. We are having, we have been focusing on technology. Last week, we were discussing how we should focus on technology with part of the learning loss mitigation funds. Some of the things that we wanted to make sure to do is, as President Hammond mentioned at the onset of the meeting, is protect our classrooms and develop better strategies through which to protect the climate and culture we are trying to establish in those classrooms. The second is protecting our systems. With the heat, our server room continues to, the temperature continues to spike, and our Chief Technology Officer has certainly been spending a little more time in the server room on weekends than I care to admit. It's, he should not have to do that, and we will be looking for a way to resolve the problem, both in the short term as well as in the long term. And then finally, with the learning loss mitigation funds, we'd like to identify a couple of priorities. The first is to see that all of our students receive devices and to have one-to-one with Chromebooks for all of our students. That includes looking ahead at the Chromebooks that are going to expire in the next couple of years and plan ahead for their replacement. And then we have certainly heard from teachers that the newer Chromebooks that we have purchased for them are not adequate, and we'd like to purchase new laptops, PCs for teachers, counselors, and administrators, something that is faster and larger and with more capacity. So we will be investigating that as well. Next slide, please, Ms. Huff. Our school reopening requirements. I bring this to your attention. This is something that we'd, I'd presented last week. It, we're now with that tiered system, and to move out of the tiered system, we would need to be under 5%. Let's go to the next slide, please, Ms. Huff. This is the data for, from the COVID-19 dashboard on California website, and the 4.1% is a seven-day average. So LA County is certainly trending in the correct direction so that we are indeed safer and will be able to slowly open up. Next slide, please. Our next steps. We will continue exploring those learning pods. We sent out a survey to parents asking if they were any interest. I had a chance to just briefly look at the results. A little earlier today, we have 153 parents who have responded indicating that they are interested in such a program for their children. We will be exploring the establishment of specialized cohorts. Now, this is different from those learning pods that I mentioned earlier in that it is with instruction and not necessarily for an extended period of time. The learning pods would be for several hours during the day, and the specialized cohorts would not necessarily be as long. We'd also like to identify some viable youth sports activities so that they can come in in cohorts following that guidance. We'll, last week, I mentioned that we would be working through a feedback loop. We'll be sharing the results of that feedback loop in the coming meetings. We are finalizing our COVID exposure management plan. This plan is critical in any opening, whether it's through learning pods or cohorts or even through a hybrid model, which we will need to continue working on as well. We will need to approve the learning continuity and attendance plan, streamline our communication. What, in reflecting upon last year, one of the data points was that I had sent out 85 communications to the community from our dismissal to the end of the school year. That's probably way too many. And so what I'll be doing is sending out biweekly communications with the latest information and just targeting that so that information can be readily accessible and you don't need to read many paragraphs about something that will change possibly hours later. And update our appropriate board policies. And as I referenced earlier, resume the work on the hybrid learning plan. If we recall, on July 9th, we had presented a recommendation for a hybrid learning plan. We received the results from a survey regarding the alignment of plans. That survey window closed after July 9th. And in fact, on July 13th, this board took the difficult decision to go on an entirely distance model just a few days before we were asked to do so by the state. So we really do need to resume work on that hybrid learning model, take the feedback that we received back then, and I'm sorry, probably send out another survey just to refine our processes. The feedback is important to us. The feedback really will help us inform our decisions. And while it's simpler to make decisions in a vacuum, it certainly not, is not as effective. So that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. We're going to move on to grounds maintenance update. Ms. Wu?
Yes, good evening, Board President, Mr. Hammond, Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Terosian, Cameron, staff, and community members. In the last couple of months, the Business Service Department is working on a more productive way to address our site ground maintenance needs as well as meet the committee's expectations. And I found that due to the schedule currently, the ground staff visited one campus every two weeks. We found ourselves always in the way is reactive, the site needed, instead of preactive, which mean that when information come to our maintenance yard, the sprinkler already broken, maybe for a couple of days. The lawn already yellow. So in order to be from reactive to preactive, I think that probably it is time we establish a punishable between the ground staff and the site lead custodian, because the site leads custodian, they are at their school site every day. They know exactly what the site need. They know exactly, because even before the lawn began to turn to yellow, they can, they can turn on the sprinkler. Or they, if there's any need, if they found that sprinkler is broken, then they report it to the maintenance yard. And if there's parts need order, then we just expire the order. By doing that, it involved a mindset changes. Because instead of heavily rely on ground staff once every two weeks visit, which mean that we rely on, while the time the ground staff is not at this school, we will rely on the head custodian, give us the timely report what the need, is the sprinkler, is the work functioning where? Or is it broken? And also the communication. It is not only one communication when the sprinkler is breaking or the supply, communication is constantly. The supplies placed, and when the supplies arrived. Or because of COVID-19, supplies not available so that the ground staff and maintenance, maintenance staff and the lead custodian, they are on the same page. Because a lot of them, we found, hey, I placed order, but the maintenance department have not respond. Maybe there's a reason respond because the parts is not available. So we definitely need to enhance the communication and find the why so that the team can work more productively. And this is also the ownership and supporting. So which mean that we rely on the timely communication from the side staff and also the timely support from our ground staff. And we also provide the training and provide necessary tool. So we, Fernando and his team already ordered the basic tool for all school side, including some, the sprinkler heads, so that they, in order for them to do the basic minor repair. And we also schedule when, every time the schedule side visit, our ground staff to provide the basic training for side maintenance staff, so that a side custodian, so they know if the miner broken, how to address it in a timely manner. And if there's a big maintenance, there, we will definitely support them and we either have send our ground staff to address in a timely manner, or if this is the too big project, we may looking for the outside contract to address. So the other thing I want to share with the board that we have talked about sprinkler issue, and we are trying to be, technology-wise, we try to replace the older sprinkler with clock, with a more Wi-Fi active functional sprinkler. And we realize that it is a much big project with our technology department input, and they are heavy load with supporting distance learning and one-to-one devices. If we have to do sooner, then which mean that we need to go out and find a consultant. And not only this, we probably need looking for the supplies and the materials. And the question is, right now, with our budget challenge, maybe it is not the time to starting this project. So we're, with the supporting for Dr. Jackson, and we already communicated for both MOT ground staff as well as site custodian, and we already work together and the site lead custodian, they are very supportive. They already request the support, the need of the training and the supplies and tools. So we will continue monitor, and I think it will take time. And eventually, we probably will, Fernando will communicate with the site administrator so that we have two layer of partnership with the ground staff and the custodian. And then the MOT director with site admin who is responsible for site facility so that we have two layer of communication, make sure that the whole purpose is we are preactive with the site need instead of reactive. So any question about the report?
Any questions of Congress?
I just have a few comments, if I may. I appreciate Ms. Wu's update. I know there are a lot of things going on, but we're still an organization and we still have facilities to maintain. And I appreciate you getting this information to us. You know, they say the most important thing for a successful relationship is communication. And so I appreciate that you have identified in this new relationship. And so I appreciate that you have identified in this new relationship, this new partnership, the need for communication and that you are enacting this communication. You know, and that it goes both directions and that it involves several layers. It's not just you, it's not just Fernando, it's not just the ground staff, it's not just the facility staff, it's everyone working together, it's this partnership. So this sounds like this is a new, a new way of looking at this to be proactive to get to it before it gets out of hand. And so I appreciate this information. I appreciate the new way of looking at this. And I'm hoping for the best. In addition to communication, it's also so important to have the tools and the training. And I appreciate that you have addressed that and acknowledged that and that you're getting the tools and the training to where it needs to go. So I thank you very much for this update. I appreciate the time that you've given to us for that update.
Here, Bertha?
Ms. Wu, thank you very much for the update. I just want to say this, you know, if one thing we have discovered throughout this whole COVID ordeal since March is that our schools are the cornerstones of our community. People look to our schools for facilities for, you know, in normal circumstances, I know we've had to close off our campuses and things like that. But in normal circumstances, they're used for play. They're used for family activities. They're, you know, we want our schools to always look the best that they possibly can. So thank you for making these changes and I look forward to seeing the results. One thing I was going to suggest is that since we don't have students on campus, we should be fully taking advantage of that. And personally, I drive by Clifton's Field just because of the close proximity to where I live. This may be happening at other school sites, but that field has a lot of bare spaces. And if we could possibly get some seed down or something, at least to fill up those spots right now that we know there won't be any activity on those fields and they can fully germinate and get stronger and things like that. So I'm just throwing that out there. If we have the ability to do that, I would really like to see that done.
Yeah, we will take a look at, thank you. And as a matter of fact, I drive around this morning too. Definitely we will take a look at, thank you.
Any other comments? I am, I've been wondering if I should say something. And I'm just going to say this because we have spent an incredible amount of time and an incredible amount of money on our facilities. And Ms. Wu, when your very first part of your presentation, you said sprinkler is broken for a couple of days. That would give me the belief that when somebody finally noticed it was broken in two days, within forty-eight hours it would be fixed. And that certainly is not the case of what's been going on. I know, what I like to do is just be honest about the conversation that we're having. What we have is some of our facilities that we've been entrusted to care for have fallen into disrepair. And that is the fact. I know Mr. Williams was on the board. He brought up about the weeds that were in front of Monrovia High School. Mr. Williams been gone for almost two years and we still have weeds in front of Monrovia High School. This is certainly not a forty-eight hour problem that we have. We're having, and I certainly hope that these ideas that are being brought forth will bear fruit. But the fact of the matter is, we have not done a good job in being good stewards of our facilities. I'd like to thank Board Member Lockerby for her steadfastness. And sometimes she sends me a lot of pictures, but that's okay. We have got to get our hands around this. We need to be good neighbors to the people where our schools are in that neighborhood. It shouldn't take a person in the community calling somebody on the board so that we get somebody with a mower to go over and take care of our lawn. That's just not how we should be. So while I do appreciate the steps that have been taken on here tonight, I think we have to be very honest and say we have not done a good job. And our commitment is that we're going to do a better job in the future. I think that's more of an accurate statement than forty-eight hours worth of broken sprinkler equipment. And I place no blame on anybody, the blame falls on me because I am on the board and I'm supposed to be watching this. And so I'm saying I'm going to be watching it even more carefully now. Thank you. Up next, we have the developer fee annual report and Ms. Wu.
Yes, Board, the government code section six six zero zero six required a district to provide any report. First of all, there's timing requirement and the formality requirement for such a report. For timing wise, that within the one hundred eighty days after the end of fiscal years, the report need to be made available to the public. And it should be reviewed at a regular board meeting after, within the fifteen days after the report made available to the public. So for the report format and the district required to report to the committee and the board that the beginning balance, any financial balance and how the money we collected and how the money spent it. So in our district, by the end of nineteen twenty school year, when we starting the school year, we have beginning balance of one point three million dollars. And during the last school year, we collect a fee for fifty-seven thousand four hundred eighty-two dollars for the development within the community. And the interest earned within, with all the fund balance is around twenty-three thousand. And we spend the funding for the two school side project, which I will detail this in the next slide. The cost is around sixty-eight thousand three hundred twenty-one. So when we end of the school year nineteen twenty, starting this school year, we have one point three million dollar developer fee used for the future project. So there's a certain requirement for how we spend the developer fee money and definitely not for the administrative salary and additional operation. And we cannot use developer fee for the different maintenance such as plumbing, H V S D, and painting. It basically target towards the growing of the student population within the district. Next slide, please. So during the last school year, the Brad Oaks Elementary School and Mayflower Elementary, we are experience the higher population compared with eighteen ninety school year. So in the Brad Oaks, the ones we did is artificial turf, which is the picture showed here reminded the project. And then we also did the asphalt repair. And we remodeled kindergarten because of the kindergarten students population. And we converted classroom number one into a science lab. We also did some project, the Mayflower on campus. We upgraded the playground equipment. And also we remodeled kindergarten area. It's also related to kindergarten classroom at the Mayflowers. And move forward for the twenty twenty-one school year. From this year, the elementary school side premise has a higher students compared with nineteen twenty school year. And as of last Friday, Monrovia High School has three more students compared with last year. So those are the campus. If there's any project, we can do that work to campus, the development fee can be spent on. Any questions?
Any questions of Ms. Wu? Thank you, Connie. We'll take up the matter of the consent calendar. Entertainer motion?
Subdued.
Second, second discussion. May we please have a vote?
For Member Lockerby?
Yes.
For Member Travanti?
Yes.
For Member Wong?
Yes.
For Member Gilliland?
Yes.
For President Hammond?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Up first is a public hearing and Dr. Kaiser will give the staff report.
Good evening, Board President Hammond, Board, Cabinet, and Community Members. A week or so ago, we had an extensive report on our learning continuity and attendance plan. And tonight it's up for a public hearing. There are four areas that are our concentration areas for this plan. The first one being technology, as was explained a little bit earlier in this meeting, the replacement of devices and new devices to complete our one-to-one and to give our teachers the necessary equipment for teaching distance and online. The next area is the area of the food lot, the food dollars that were lost during the spring shutdown and during this fall. These funds are allowable to be able to refund the general fund for the food funds that were lost during that time. The third area will be the intervention area for learning loss. And in this area, we will be looking at the necessary materials and the necessary services to our students in terms of tutoring and intervention to make sure that we are intervening where students have lost some of their learning. And so in terms of our learning continuity and attendance plan, it outlines these areas. Are there any questions?
Any questions of Dr. Kaiser?
I do have a question, Dr. Kaiser. This is a public hearing. Who from the public has been either consulted or surveyed or given input other than the board?
In the development of this plan, it was required of us to consult with our stakeholders, to have a consultation. And so in terms of the consultation, there were parents that were consulted, staff members classified and certificated. There were students that were consulted with and there were parents from the community. And so in terms of the development of the plan, it went through many different input sessions with our task forces. And then as it was developed, there was a consultation with both of our unions, our teachers' union and our classified union. There was a consultation. And the form of these consultations, after the input was given and the plan developed, the consultation was to see if there was anything that the public felt that we had missed.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, this is a public hearing and I'll open it up. Ms. Huff, have we received any communication for this item?
We have not.
Have we received any information against this item?
We have not.
I will close the public hearing and we'll slate it for a vote later on in September. Thank you. Next up, Dr. Kaiser.
Sorry, can I ask a question? In the interim, can you still get public comment or input from the public? Or you have closed it, yes, so?
Yeah, now closed, we are moving forward.
Okay.
Up next, well, is this going to be Patrick Garcia or is it going to be Dr. Kaiser? For the Real to Real?
Patrick Garcia will be presenting this item.
So then up next, we have Real to Real and we'll have our staff report from Patrick Garcia.
Hey, good evening, Board President Hammond, Board of Education, Dr. Torosian and Cabinet, as well as the community. Since March ninth of twenty twenty, it has not been possible for us to rent the Taylor Performing Arts Center or any of the facilities at Monrovia High School due to COVID nineteen. With revenue from rentals way down, I began investigating the possibility of hosting film shoots on the campus at Monrovia High School. My assistant Jackie and I began researching to find the best and most experienced film location agencies, looking at customer reviews and speaking to personal contacts who have the entertainment industry knowledge. We narrowed it down to four and sent each of them some stock photos to cultivate interest and heard back from Real to Real Inc., which is one of Hollywood's oldest and largest film location agencies working within the entertainment industry. They immediately shared that they were interested in representing us and that Netflix, one of their most high-profile clients, was already showing interest too. In a nutshell, Real to Real represents the owners of a variety of properties in the L.A. area, including Santa Anita Race Track. They have secured locations for tens of thousands of feature films, television programs, music videos, still photography sessions, and commercial productions. By listing Monrovia High School with Real to Real, they will market our facility to all of their clients and M U S D will collect the revenue for the film and photography productions we host at no cost, out of pocket, to the district. With the entertainment industry moving into high gear for September, October, and November, this could be an ideal time to move forward. With your permission, we would like to enter into an agreement with Real to Real so that we have an opportunity to review prospects. With the loss of rental revenue due to COVID nineteen, this could be a way to generate revenue. Any questions?
Any questions of Patrick?
I do, I have a question.
Okay.
Just for the public's knowledge, Patrick, can you explain in the event, you know, once we get back on campus, students are on campus, we have our conservatory operating and using the theater, how that would work, how do we coordinate that if something should come up?
Right, so I already explained to them that there is a possibility that we would be back in school, at least in a hybrid model this year. And so we have the ability to be able to negotiate timing. So for example, if we were back in a hybrid model and filming needed to only happen on a weekend or after three thirty P.M., then that's something that they understand. And we as the, as the, you know, business that is looking to be utilized on the shoot, you know, we would be consulted and we would be allowed to be able to negotiate those times. Or to say no if it wasn't something that was going to be workable.
All right, and then also in addition to the timing of those events, the, since Netflix, and I did go to their website and I viewed a lot of their clients and they have a long list of impressive clients. But for filming purposes, you would screen that type of movie or commercial or anything that was being filmed there and that of course it would be appropriate for our school?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So we don't have to say yes to anything, especially anything that has content that we would not feel comfortable with. And so I would be looking at those things and also consulting with Dr. Torosian and business services to make sure that we were not choosing anything that was going to cast any kind of negative shadow or any kind of aspersion onto us as a school district.
Perfect, okay, thank you, Dr. Garcia.
Mr. Wong, you had a question?
I did, hi Patrick.
Hey.
I was wondering if we had any guestimation or whether they put out any ideas on how much revenue we could anticipate during the course of a year?
Well, so just to look more specifically, like when they were talking about the Netflix idea. So the Netflix, they were looking at like a fifteen-week shoot, at least one day per week. And so with that particular project, I believe they said that was a fifteen thousand dollar a day cost that they would be paying. And then addition to that, you make half that amount the day before the shoot and half that amount the day after the shoot. So, you know, thirty thousand dollars for a one-day shoot. So, uh, you know, thirty thousand dollars for a one-day shoot. And then, you know, that would include, you know, the preparation the day before and then the cleaning up and clearing out the day after.
Uh, a, along that lines, obviously that's a significant amount of money.
Yeah.
What, what obligations or when they come in, are they going to leave it exactly as they found it?
I, I have had extensive conversations with Hunter, the gentleman that I've been working with. And what they do on their end is he said that they collect a substantial deposit from all of the people who they work with. And, uh, especially, you know, he was using Netflix as an example. You know, Netflix is going to be trying to work with whomever they choose as their location because they're going to need to be coming back to that location over the rest of this year. And so there, it's, it's important to them to build that relationship. So what he said was that they do not return the deposit to the client until we are satisfied that things have been returned the way that they need to be. And let's just say, for example, hypothetically, and God forbid, that something expensive were to happen. He said that then what they then do is they go into their insurance. And so they then deal with the insurance company to get this handled. He, he said their, their job is to make sure that things get returned as good as they were found or better.
Great, I, you know, I, I think about the high school and we have such a, an incredible high school that I can only imagine that it's going to be a very sought off, sought after, uh, location. But at the same time, we've clearly had problems with our lawn. Uh, and I would hate to have a new lawn put in and then have it killed off, uh, due to all of the trucks. I mean, obviously there's a lot of equipment going on there.
Sure.
And at the same time, we are looking at, and this is, I guess, a quest, bigger question is, uh, so we're working with a company to change the, the look of the front of the high school as far as putting in, uh, drought-resistant, uh, plants and so forth. I, I just want to make sure that we don't get stuck in between a, a contract that's three months or four months long in which they say, you can't do anything that we've already scheduled.
Right.
So, um, I just want to throw that out there now, just to make sure that, um, they don't hold up anything that we're already in the works of doing.
Sure. I, I haven't addressed that with them, but I will, Brian, I'm going to call him tomorrow.
Perfect.
So I will, I will definitely do that.
Yeah, and the same goes with, with routine maintenance, meaning that, you know, I, I don't want them to pick a, a spot because they think it looks, you know, worn down or old and they say, we don't want you to fix that, which is, uh, maybe works great for them, but not for our students.
Right, of course.
Perfect.
Thanks, Brian.
Sure.
Celine?
Thanks, um, I'm basically following up on what Brian, uh, said there at the end. But first of all, um, Patrick, I want to say thank you for always thinking outside of the box and always, always coming up with a great idea, um, for us. And I do think this is a great idea, but I've worked in the entertainment industry as crew. And as Brian said, the crew can, can do some unintentional damage. And I would feel more comfortable if someone from, um, the district, because I read the agreement and it says someone from Real to Real would be there on location. But I'd feel a lot more comfortable if also there was someone from our district there that, you know, hey, don't tear up the new law, don't hit the sprinklers, or something like that. Just someone who was, who was watching out.
I've already had that conversation with them and I told them, you know, per our use of facilities form, that we do not allow anyone on campus without us having a representative there. And so we would certainly have a representative from our campus there. And so I asked this question as well because I was trying to be very specific in preparation for knowing that I would be, you know, coming before you all to ask these questions. And so I said, I said, look, we, we need to make sure that our facilities are protected. You know, this is a, this is a beautiful space and we want to keep it exactly the way that it is. So I wanted to make sure that we were not going to be hiring our person to come out and be there and that that money then was going to be taken out of the money that we were given. And so he said that would not be. He said our person would be hired and, and
Real to Real's person?
No, our, our person
The district's person.
Right, would be hired, but they would be paid by Real to Real and that would not come out of the money that was from us for the rental.
Okay, and you know, just having us there isn't what I'm looking for. I'm looking for someone who has eyes on this, who, who is watching, watching everything, not just, you know, hanging out, is watching to make sure that our property is, is, you know, being taken care of, which I, I know that that's what they want also, but accidents do happen. And so I want to make sure that our person is, is hands-on, is, is, is eyes-on at all times.
Person that I was thinking about, uh, Celine?
You.
Because Angela was also our person that, that oversees, uh, our rentals when we have clients on campus. And so I think Angela would be an excellent person to, to be there to oversee that kind of thing because I think he has that kind of a technical eye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ed?
Patrick, uh, yeah, we're not going to be out of COVID here for a while. So are we sure that this, how are we going to ensure that when they leave, they do a real deep cleaning and it's done to our satisfaction?
You mean in terms of, in terms of putting our campus back in place for all of the?
I'm talking about a COVID-friendly, not unfriendly, deep cleaning, that they wipe down all the door handles that people, you know, the whole, the whole sanitize, the whole sanitization process that we go through to deep clean to make sure that, uh, there is no risk, uh, that none of our students or staff are put at any risk from, uh, from COVID.
What I, what I think they're going to have to do, Ed, is I think that like the rentals that come through, they're going to have to hire our custodial staff to come through afterward and make sure that everything is returned exactly the way that we need it to be and that it's safe and orderly for our students or our staff or whomever is on campus or allowed to be on campus at that time.
Yeah, we need to make sure that's, that's part of the whole process.
Yeah, I agree. I'm writing that down, Ed. Any other questions or comments? I, I have just one, Patrick, that I would like to add, um, to the contract. Is I would like a notification process to all of our neighbors where the school is so that they're informed at least seventy-two hours beforehand of this going to be happening.
Okay. Got it.
Anybody that's been around, um, locations will tell you that they're, they're disruptive. They, it's like a circus came to town. And to be good neighbors, I want to make sure that we are informing people that it is happening. I think you can check with the Old Town Merchants, uh, Motab. They have a form that they routinely use so you don't have to reinvent the wheel.
Okay.
So that people can, they can go out and make sure that everybody in the neighborhood is well-informed prior to this happen.
Okay. I got it. Thank you, that's a great comment.
Anything else? I'll entertain a motion.
Don't move.
Second.
Motion in a sec, motion in a second, any further discussion? Ms. Huff, let me please have a vote.
For member Travanti?
Yes.
For member Wong?
Yes.
For member Gilliland?
Yes.
For member Lockerbie?
Yes.
For President Hammond?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thanks, you guys, thank you so much.
Good night, Patrick.
Patrick.
Good to see you, Patrick.
Thank you. Up next, we have a report on the unaudited actual financial reports for fiscal year twenty nineteen twenty. Ms. Wu?
Yes, the board and the Business Service Department, we finished, closed the nineteen twenty school year book. And tonight we submitted the report for board approval. Next slide, please. So for the general fund, we have unrestricted and restricted, restricted mostly, um, including all the federal state categorical program. And unrestricted is the funding for our district general oper, um, general operation. And for, um, for nineteen twenty school year, we, unrestricted general fund, we end, we end up have a, um, increased any fund balance, maybe over twenty-eight thousand dollars. And the restrict fund will end of increase the any fund balance forty-three thousand dollars, which mean that both unrestricted, restricted general fund were not deficit spending in nineteen twenty school year. So for the combined general fund, um, by the end of the June thirtieth, the district any fund balance increased by total of seventy-two, seventy-two thousand, two hundred seventeen dollars. Next slide, please. So compared with our projection, board approved a couple of months ago. So here's the difference, the revenue, we have received little more, little bit more, little bit more compared with projection, not that much, um, over thirteen thousand. And expenditure, we, when we in the process close the book, we have, um, received more enormous. Uh, we, we're not aware of it, most likely is a non-public school from special ed side. And, and as well as indirect costs, because as my prior slides show that the restrict, um, fund, we, we have, um, for the forty-three thousand or more any fund balance, which mean that we spend less um, as a result of the school dismissal starting March sixteenth. So indirect costs will be less also. So as a result, um, we actually spent more than we projected, um, before. So as a result, the any fund balance compared with projection, uh, we are, um, eighty-eight thousand, nine hundred fifty-two, uh, less. Next slide, please. So this slide basically compare with, um, nineteen twenty to eighteen ninety school, school year. So eighteen ninety is a normal school year, nineteen twenty is not. So when we compare these two years, um, we starting this, um, nineteen twenty school year with beginning balance, which is over half million dollars less. And we receive a less revenue. And for expenditure, um, we actually spend, uh, less compared with eighteen ninety school year. So as a result, for unrestricted fund, um, unrestricted general fund, we end up have a little bit higher ending fund balance, which is twenty-eight thousand dollars. Next slide, please. I also compared with two years showed here with the bar, the each category for the, um, expenditure. We talk about a certificate salary comparison, classified employee benefit and the operation. So for the employee compensation for both classified, um, and the certificate salary, compared with eighteen ninety, we, we spend less. Um, and this will do the result that a school dismissal, so we will have a less extra hour, less sub-cost. Uh, however, the employee benefit, we're still pay more because of the retirement compensation, uh, retirement contribution for both customers. The rate is, um, nineteen twenty is higher than eighteen ninety and also is the health insurance. So, uh, we still experience a high employee benefit in that category. For other operation, um, ready costs for books supply, service and, um, operation cost, uh, all those category, the nineteen twenty school year, we spend less compared with the year before. Next slide, please. So the next two slide, uh, present board for the other fund, the, the main district operation fund is general fund. For the other fund, including the adult education, child development and the food service. And, um, this slide, the three fund listed in this slide, um, all, um, have a net increase after, uh, nineteen twenty's operation. So, um, with food service, we are very happy that, uh, this is a big year for food service. And, uh, we are end of have, you know, contributed to over seventy-three thousand dollars for our borderline. And then when you look at all category for the food services, each category, we, we actually spend less. The team is very conscious with the spending, so we spend much less compared with the eighteen nineteen school year. Next slide, please. This slide shows a fund, the deferred maintenance development fee is the facility related fund. For deferred maintenance, um, we, we spend over two hundred thousand dollars. But however, in revenue side, we did not contribute one hundred thousand dollars as we did in the previous years. The reason we did, did that is because the routine restricted maintenance, um, the district contribution is increased from two percent to three percent. So we, um, tried to spend the, the routine reserve maintenance first and then, um, deferred maintenance. So that, that's why this, um, fund experienced the decrease of any fund balance. The development fee detail, I just reported to the board. For the fee-based program, it's including the international students program, catering program and the patchers program. And I'm glad that, um, Patcher is very proactive and he has a new, he found a new way to generate the additional revenue, uh, due to the, um, facility use was disallowed because of COVID-19. So hopefully that, uh, that new adventure will bring additional revenue to replace the revenue we lost from the, uh, from rent and the lease program. Next slide, please. So, um, next step is, um, we submit for board approval for the nineteen twenty in order actual. And we submit to, uh, to the county on time matter. And, uh, we're going to update our multi-year projection. And a couple of months ago, we reported board that, um, in the multi-year projection with twenty twenty-one as the first school year, uh, we are looking for two point three million dollars shortage. And, um, that shortage was still there. So starting next Monday, the cabinet need to start working on the budget reduction plan. Because of the legal required, they submitted such plan with the first internal report, which is due to the, um, county office education by December. So, um, actually is the first board meeting at the December, is December ninth. So we basically have, um, September, October, November, three months to come up this budget, um, this budget reduction plan. And, um, by the, this, this September thirtieth, uh, the board, um, as a requirement, the board will approve the district, uh, learning continuity and attendance plan. And we're starting, um, contact audit to audit our nineteen twenty in order actual as a, as a adequate requirement. And we are waiting for the governor's July preliminary budget so that we're going to starting another, um, budget cycle. That is the end of my presentation, any question from board?
Any questions of Connie? Um, I know from the public, it's, um, that is a lot of information and it seems weird that we may not have questions about it, but this is something that we work at constantly. We have all been, I'm going to try to hold this up and it, it is a booklet that looks like this, which is what we're talking about. We get this four times a year, um, to look at and, and our budget is a living document that changes all the time. So as we start looking at this, we are now looking at it in the rearview mirror and saying, did we hit the targets that we were aiming for when we first set the budgets? I don't want anybody to ever think that the board is, um, not paying attention to where the money is and how it affects what it is that we're able to do in, as a, as a school district. Nothing can be further from the truth. We spend an exorbitant amount of time with the finances on this. Anyway, thank you very much, Ms. Wu, and I'll entertain a motion.
Don't move. Second.
There's a motion in a second, is there any discussion? Ms. Huff, let me have a vote. Ms. Huck, let me have a vote.
For Wong?
Yes.
For member Gilliland?
Yes.
For member Lockerbie?
Yes.
For member Travanti?
Yes.
For President Hammond?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Next, we have a resolution to establish a GAN limit, and Ms. Wu?
Yes, for the GAN limit is actually the older rule, and it was established back in November 1979. It adopted in the proposition force and, and four, and there, which is also adding to the article number eight dash B. So basically, this gun limit basically plays the limit on the growth of expenditure for the public fund program. So this is a 40 years old program where a requirement, and the district is still required to have a board adopt each year. And however, our spending limitation actually will be guarding a different new rules. So since the law is still active, then we will follow, follow the requirement. So based on, on the calculation, in the 1920 fiscal year, our GAN limit is 37.5 million, million dollars. Oh, 100, or more than 37, it's, yes, $37 million, and then the project of 2021 fiscal year is 38.1 million, million dollars. And we will also guard, our spending also guarded by the program, also by the AB 1200. So this is just the routine reg, regular requirement we are required for board approval.
Any questions of Connie?
I have some questions. So this GAN limit places limits on the growth of expenditures for publicly funded programs. But don't we already have other other guidelines in place? This, this basically says, don't spend more than you've got, correct?
Um, certainly, yes.
So don't we already have other guidelines, say from Laco, that say the same thing, but in modern, more modern terms?
That's correct.
So this seems like an outdated, very outdated resolution. Is this something that we might want to look at talking to a legislator about either updating or eliminating?
I, I think so.
Okay. All right, well, thank you for, I, you, you spent some time with me on this earlier also, and I appreciate that because it, it is difficult to understand, so thank you for spending the time helping us understand better.
Any further questions? Entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, is there any discussion? Ms. Huck, let me please have a vote.
For member Gilliland?
Yes.
For member Lockerbie?
Yes.
For member Travanti?
Yes.
For member Wong?
Yes.
For President Hammond?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Next up in the board business, Dr. Trozian will present the resolution recognizing the week of September 6th or 12th as National Suicide Prevention Week.
Thank you, President Hammond, members of the board. The Board of Education is requested to approve resolution number 2021 dash 04, recognizing the week of September 7th through 11, 2020 is National Suicide Prevention Week, and the month of September 2020 as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. The, this week and this month is really a time when millions of people around the world join their voices to share a message of hope and healing. Preventing suicide requires the efforts of an entire community. And in Monrovia, we have often come together in order to do just that, whether it's through, primarily through healing connections. And so this resolution memorializes and reaffirms our commitment to suicide prevention.
Any questions, comments? Tomorrow, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I just want to say, I, I think Dr. Trozian said September 7th through the 12th, and the resolution is the 6th through the 12th, right? Just want to make sure that's on record correctly.
Seven through the 11th would be the weekdays, right? Six through the 12th includes the weekend.
Right, right, and that's what the resolution language says, September 6th.
Over the week, right.
Six through the 12th?
Yes.
Okay.
I just would like to announce prior to the vote that tomorrow evening, in recognition of Suicide Prevention Week and Month, there will be a, there will be a gathering of people at the First Presbyterian Church at the corner of Myrtle and Foothill. It'll be, it'll be lighting of candles. It'll be a very solemn ceremony, but a ceremony of hope. And that's Dr. Trozian said, as a community coming together and make sure that the community watches out for and heals itself. And if anybody be interested in going to that, it'll be at 101 East Foothill Boulevard at 7:00 PM tomorrow night. That's Thursday, the 10th of September. Any other questions, comments? Entertain a motion.
So moved.
Backing.
There are motion in a second, any discussion? Maybe please have a vote.
For member Lockerbie?
Yes.
For member Travanti?
Yes.
For member Wong?
Yes.
For member Gilliland?
Yes.
For President Hammond?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Dr. Trozian, pending board issues.
Thank you, President Hammond, members of the board. While we have updated some of these items, I did want to bring to your attention a couple of more items that the legislature addressed before the session closed. The first is the ethnic studies requirement for high schools. This will be commenced in the 2029-2030 school year. This was also an effort that the board had joined in really advocating for its inclusion. And so it's, it's nice to see that effort realized. And the next one I wanted to simply call attention to is one that I know is near and dear to board member Travanti's heart. And that is the Stop Tobacco Access to Kids Enforcement Act, which prohibits the selling of flavored tobaccos to minors, and really the possession of it. So another one that the board demonstrated some advocacy, and that has been chaptered. That concludes my pending board issues report.
Thank you very much. Our next regularly scheduled board meeting will be on the 23rd of September. We will be having a special meeting next week, and I have forgotten the date, is it Wednesday or Thursday?
You know, President Hammond, we should probably look at that, because we have also changed some back-to-school nights, and we certainly want to make sure to be cognizant of that.
Well, the whole community will put the information out, and so be, be looking for the date that we, we do that on.
I think it was Thursday, President Hammond, Thursday the 17th.
Well, when we're 100% sure, we'll let everybody know. And our regular scheduled board meeting was on the 23rd of September, followed by a meeting on the 14th of October and on the 28th of October. We do have back-to-school nights on September the 10th for Clifton and CELC on September the 11th. I'm sorry?
That was one that has, that will be changed.
Okay.
Given the, given the current conditions and the air quality, I believe they are looking at the following week, September 18th, that just happened.
And when we have that, we'll announce that. Dates to the calendar on, we've already, we're closed. The state of the schools will be on Wednesday, October 7th, look forward to that. Before we close, our community has been facing very anxious times over the last couple of days. The board would be remiss if we did not put some thanks out there. Thank you to the city of Monrovia, and all the folks there who have been working diligently, keeping all the information flowing out to the citizens here in town. Our police department had stepped up their patrols in all the neighborhoods to make sure that people who heated the, you know, even though it was voluntary to leave, that their homes were not left wide open. Lastly, on behalf of the board, I'd like to thank the Monrovia Fire Department and every other fire department that answered the call for mutual aid. Seeing those planes today, I know it makes it so that a number of citizens will be able to fall asleep tonight. We've had some restless nights. So thank you to every one of those firefighters, everyone from the Forest Service, I know they're near and dear to Ed's heart. Watching Ed watch the planes is like watching a play-by-play or listening to Ed, a play-by-play of a sporting event. It, it was sure, it was sure great to hear those helicopters and airplanes today. Anyway, thank you to every single one of those people for helping make us safe. And this evening, we will be recessing our regular board meeting and going back into closed session. But when we come out, we will be closing our board meeting in memory of Leroy Barnes, who is the husband of a Monrovia Unified School District bus driver, Maria Barnes. Leroy passed away recently, surrounded by his family. Maria had this to say about her husband, Leroy was very caring and a giving man who loved his children and grandchildren. He gave his life to God four years ago and served on the deacon board of Amani Christian Cathedral Church in Pomona. When we do adjourn, our thoughts and prayers will be with Maria and her family during this very difficult time. And we will go into, we will recess this meeting and go back into closed session.